And it's discuss, approve, disapprove, adopt and a policy to block social network such as Facebook. We can't, we can't.
I want you to stand like I said, well, go ahead and block it till we get a policy in place. If we have a policy in place, we can amend this decision and turn it back on. I want to talk with the department heads too to find out exactly what they use it for and how they would use it. And then I think he does this.
Why spend that money?
That's enough.
Do you figure out what you want to do?
Huh?
Why spend the money and then undo what you did?
That's enough. Mr. Vidore, there is a zero tolerance policy and everybody turned it into a roundtable discussion.
Please speak if you recognize.
All Jeff has to do is hit a button.
That's not for you because I'm talking to you too.
So you don't want to do the policy first and then, or you want to block it?
Block it, establish the policy and turn it back on.
You don't want to do the policy first?
No.
So I'll give the policy, the social network, certain things.
Exactly right. If you read this, it says, "Adopting a policy first."
Right, you need to adopt a policy because you're going to say anything about policy, block the social network.
It's to adopt the policy to block.
To adopt the policy.
And nobody has a problem with adopting a policy like this.
They'll make a motion, we go ahead and develop and adopt a policy to block the social network against Facebook. We can't, we can't.
I second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None, especially. Get together to form that policy, the policy committee, please, here.
What?
Well, we guess you and I are to get together for the present policy members.
Discuss, approve, disapprove of appointing the Karnes County Historical Society the responsibility of coordinating the restoration of the German 7.7 centimeter IFK 1916 canyon in front of the courthouse. Sue wants to do that, all they want to do is restore the canyon.
I talked with Sue yesterday on this issue. There, Sue's, the Historical Society, in my understanding, but my conversation with Sue, is they are soliciting private donations to get that done. They just want the county to give them approval to act as the agent in restoring the canyon. We talked to Sue, there'd be no, my understanding was with Sue was there'd be no funding coming from the county to restore the canyon. It'd be all private donations, but they want to act as the county agent in that case.
And if the Historical Society, that Sue would do it, she'll take care of it.
I spoke somewhere there also, and that's kind of where I understand. Hopefully, county doesn't have to put any money in. I'll make a motion, we go ahead and allow the Historical Society to respond to the building restoration of the German canyon.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number 11, discuss, approve, disapprove of appointing the Karnes County Historical Society the responsibility of coordinating the restoration of two county saves and two vault doors and frames. That's Sue, she has two saves and two vault doors that she wants to have restored so they can go back in the courthouse once it's restored. One's in By's office and one is, I don't know where y'all put it.
Again, I talked with Sue on that last night. Sue's heard, this will be, have to be a budgeted item for the county. As Judge Shaw says, it's the safe in By's office and also it's the safe that's in that old building in the old courthouse right now. I asked her how much she thought it might run, she said maybe a thousand dollars, maybe two thousand dollars, but we'll have to budget some funds and come budget to get those things restored.
But right now, she just wants to coordinate the restoration, right?
Right, but she also wants us to make sure that we understand that the county will, it'd have to be a budgeted fund.
So it's going to be more like ten or twelve thousand, that'd be about.
Well, I know, but, you know, that's what she said, I know it'll be more than that. But we can at least start getting numbers and getting things prior.
Okay. So I make a motion, we approve appointing the Karnes County Historical Society the responsibility of coordinating the restoration of the two county saves and two vault doors and frames.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number 12, discuss, consider, act, allow the county treasurer by Malone to negotiate bank depositary bid renewal and interest rates to the Fall City National Bank. And By had put that on there. If you'll let, come on By.
I need to correct myself a little bit on that. And I'm sorry I didn't get a copy of the state statute to you. It said the Commissioners Court, the county shall select by the process provided by this chapter, where more banks enter the contract.
You guys have the package?
Oh, did it?
It's scratched up, but it's in there.
On the section 116.021, the last line, on the expression of contract and inspection, the contract may be renewed for two years under terms negotiated by the Commissioners Court. It doesn't say any kind of treasure on that, so it would be safe to say that the Commissioners can appoint me to do the negotiation. Mr. Hancock?
The Commissioners can do whatever, but it's, I think it's the Commissioners.
I don't think we can delegate the duty. That's where the concern, it says under terms negotiated by the Commissioners Court.
Yeah, see, I don't know how that.
So we have to negotiate it.
But can they appoint me to do that?
No.
We've never done a renewal before, so this, I may be on this.
But let me tell you what happened. When Herb was really concerned about that, Herb came to me, goes, "I'm still concerned about that the way that that's on the agenda." Herb and I called her all together, he said, "We can't delegate the duty to that." He says, "If the court wants to go out for bids, I mean, wants to..."
Negotiate the renewal.
Negotiate the renewal, we can, because it's on here, it's indicated on the agenda that it's on here. And if not, I don't need approval for them to go out for contracts. So if y'all want to just stay with Fall City, because in 0122, the next section, 022, it says, "One each week for the 20 days before the date, the judge shall place over the judge's name in a newspaper." So we could do it, if we don't want to do that. One thing Mr. Pierce brought up to me, and I kind of, Judge Pierce is what I kind of, he said, "You know, we've always bid it out." And he says, "I feel like that's a more fair thing to do."
Yeah, but we're on a timeline constriction, on April 30th, my contract being up. And we have two banks, Karnes County National Bank and Fall City National Bank, that always bid for it. And I don't want to say too much, let me get this up in trouble. Fall City National Bank always comes in with better interest rates. It's in our best interest just to renew our contract with them right now and not go out through the process of bids and everything.
My concern is, we have a whole lot of money in the bank. We have money now and we're going to have money for a couple of years. And we need to save some, set aside, need to get as much interest as possible.
Right.
And we need to negotiate with the bank to put some money somewheres else.
Well, they have to collateralize our money for us, it's...
Well, if we have five million dollars and we're getting six tenths of a percent interest on five million dollars when we could get 2% interest.
Where?
On three million of it someplace else.
Where?
I have to negotiate for it, tell you that, I'm not, I'm not authorized to do it.
As the investment officer, there are certain places you can or cannot do. You can't tie money up for a certain amount of time. If you want to become the investment officer, Pete, by all means, have at it. But I've been the investment officer, the only investment officer that is trained by this county for the past five years. I go to school every year to do that. So you're, again, trying to tell me how to do my job, that I think I'm doing a fairly good job on. Interest rates stink right now. They stink.
Investment pools that government entities participate in do not garner as high an interest rate as we have right now in Fall City National Bank.
Yeah, they only get point one compared to point seven.
My only question is still going to be, is do we want to, see if the court, do y'all want to extend the contract? Or do y'all want to advertise? I mean, if you want to extend, we can go out to, I can go out to the bank and see. Pete, you go with me if you want to.
And why would I not be allowed to go?
Because that's, I can't delegate.
Would we need to come before the court?
I can't delegate the authority. Well, I can sit there and listen.
Oh, you can sit there and listen, yeah. But I can't give you the authority.
But the bank representative would need to come before the court because the statute says the Commissioners Court, it does not say one or two members.
And I'm questioning, why are we on a kind of constraint right now, should we do this prior?
Because I already contracted the, contacted the bank and they said that, yes, they would consider a renewal.
And if we go out for bids like we normally do, we're too close to the timeline.
Well, no, you're not, you're pushing it. We can have it, we have time, but April 30th is it, is the deadline, or May 1st, our contract ends May 1st.
But then we have to have a special meeting to authorize the advertisement for the bids, et cetera, et cetera, because of course they have to advertise for a certain amount of time and there has to be a lag time before the bids to open the renewal.
I think, I agree with Judge Pierce, I think we need to do it.
And a lot of money, a lot of that money, a lot of that.
Mr. Hancock shaking his head yes back there too.
Are going to want to collateralize it.
I mean, Judge Pierce did it for 11 years, so.
I don't know how to get done by, and I don't know your business, I don't know. I'm just saying that I've been told by people, there's places you can get more.
But if there's, because of its county's funds, there's, it's restricted to certain things.
That's right, and I don't know the full restrictions all around.
Right, and I can't, we can tie money up for a certain amount of time, but we can't tie that.
If we get more interest, let's get more.
Well, if we could get more, we would. But you're not going to get 2%. Fall City National Bank is at point seven five right now.
Okay, you're not going to get it if you never ask, for sure.
And that's why, that's why we need to go out and negotiate with Fall City National Bank.
Okay.
That's, in my opinion, that is the best thing we need to do.
See, my opinion is, I'm sorry, my opinion on this, it's go out for bids as we normally do on it. And because we're the county, we do have two banks that always bid on it. And irregardless if Fall City comes in a little bit lower, but I think that we should be fair and still give the other banks an option to come out here and bid. If we have enough, if we have enough time, if you think we have enough time.
Well, you have to, you have to put it to 20 days. So we need to have a meeting Monday.
We may have a special meeting, but I think it would be only fair for all the banks. And even though Fall City would come in or Karnes County would come in lower, whichever way, but it would kind of be fair to everyone in the county because we represent the whole county.
I agree. I think we need to do that.
So then it says, discuss, consider, act. Do you just want to take no action?
No action because it's discuss the renewal.
And then a special meeting on Monday and you'll send me what we need for the special meeting?
No.
Herb, I know you had that other one that we had pulled, we had done it last year, the year before last. You get with us and we'll put it on the...
We have a copy of the depository bid in my office. But the letter and stuff needs to come from you.
I need a copy of the depository bid then. It's probably on Fall City's office.
He has it.
Do you have it, Mr. Hancock?
Because I sent it to him.
Okay. Number 13 on the agenda is to discuss, approve, disapprove, purchasing a bulletproof vest for the deputies of the sheriff's office who do not have one and for those with vests who have exceeded the age warranty. We are requesting the purchase of 13 vests at the cost of $4150 each for a total of $5,349.50, as well as two raid vests for the cost of $125 each for a total of $250. The total cost for all 15 vests would come to a total of $5,599.50.
Is it 15, 16, Jeff?
What's this?
13 vests and?
13 vests.
Two raid vests?
Two raid vests.
Yes, and I don't, let me give you, I don't know if you'll need. The ones we have on now, the deputies.
What's a raid vest?
Yeah, I was going to say, what's a raid?
It's the ones like you just put it over, it's just like the one that...
You don't hook on, you just throw it over your head?
Oh, okay.
Put it on you, over and you close it? Oh, okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah, and a lot of deputies are out there, either they're wearing the vests that were borrowed or some are expired and they, or some they borrowed somebody else and they weren't fitted for them. And, you know, that's, that's the concern right now.
How do they wear a hand-me-down vest? Yeah, I mean, isn't it body fitter?
No, it's, well, yeah, but it's either going to be shorter or it's going to be too, I mean, it's going to bother you, I mean, your underarms, stuff like that, so.
Yes.
And some are out there that are not wearing the things, so that's not, that's what worries me. And Mr. Vidore is included in here.
Two raid vests is all you need?
Yeah, but we just need, yeah. What I really want is, I want to get the vests in so my deputies can get out there wearing the vests, you know, that are, that are new and that are not expired or something. That's my main concern.
Yes, we do.
They don't wear them, yes, they're... I make a motion, we approve item 13, that's the question, but it's not a shift.
I second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
Don't leave it, you got to amend.
Okay.
Motion carries five zero. The next item, he wants to amend his budget for the 559950. As those unforeseen circumstances, he didn't know how big the people are he was going to hire. Size wasn't required.
I make a motion.
So that one can't, that one can be unforeseen, right?
Yes.
It is unforeseen because...
How does he know he's going to hire?
One, did not know, he probably didn't have the inventory of his stuff prior to coming on, so he didn't know what was expired, what is not expired. He did not know the size of his people that he would be hiring. You would think that we could have that prior to giving, but that's all, to me, it's, he was, it was a hard time hiring people, starting with, right, Sheriff?
I think it's a matter too, it's a great public, it's a...
It's still liability to the...
That's one of the main things, what it is.
Okay, so I make a motion, we amend the sheriff's department budget. Does he already made it?
Show me my list.
Show me my list. I second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda, thank Sheriff, is number 15, discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing DSA to issue Karnes County jail contract documents for bidding.
Good morning, Mr. Judge. The, your new jail and sheriff's office and courtroom documents have been prepared and we are ready to go ahead and issue those documents out for bidding now. We have two items that we are, really three items that we will be coordinating this coming week prior to actually, you know, me sealing the documents and putting them out to the contractors. One is, the county attorney has been reviewing our Division Zero documents, which have to do with, we use the standard AIA contract documents, general conditions and contracts for constructions as amended and supplemented by conditions that we've written, that we've used on all of our county correctional projects in the past, and insurance requirements, which are provided to his office. And we'll be having a phone conference early next week to finalize those and get his approval on those to be included in the documents. I'm dropping off some documents to the city for their final review of the driveway location and, and it may say where it is or we may move it if they're very unhappy with where it is, but that would be modification we'll make next week after I have a Skype meeting with them. And one other item, yesterday, I received the final report on the environmental and I will be presenting that to the court in the next week and we will be issuing an addendum to those documents to address what needs to be done in the environmental. The good news is, Building C, which is not going to be in our building footprint, is going to still require more testing, but Building A, where the main gen is, we do have the final report on what needs to be done there. The best news of all is, other than there's some dust in the building that has to be contained and the system that was discovered when Roden Bridge helped us clear things out, that was discovered that has to be pumped out, that any containment in the soils, there's going to be enough spoils in the soil that if, by the time they mix all the good dirt and anything around that building together, we don't, it won't be considered a hazardous material to have to do anything with it. So that was a very good news for us because I was anticipating even up to having to take, you know, six to 12 inches of the dirt off the entire site and maybe having to, you know, spoil that as hazardous, so that was very good news, in my opinion. So those final three items are being coordinated and anything that is affected, we can issue an addendum. But getting the plans out and starting the bidding process will allow us to take bids and hopefully hire our contractor by the end of May and get started with the jail project.
When is the demolition going to start, what bid will they have there?
The demolition we're including is part of the overall construction contract because we'll get better pricing, we feel like, if we, if we put it all together and bid everything out together as one large project versus, you know, doing it as small, separate projects. So part of our contract documents is the demolition plan. And that Building C, the one that, the Building C was already demolished so that we could do more testing underneath the building because it was up on Pierce. And like I said, they, when they did that additional testing, they found some containment, contaminants that they need to do even more testing. And I just received that yesterday and I'll be prepared to present that to court. Either we'll have a special meeting or I'll come at the next meeting and present to you the next step on that. But Building C area is out of our footprint, so that's good. We would, it's right there south of Mr. Malloy's property, so it would not affect, even if we're still doing some hazardous items in that area, it will not affect starting construction of the jail project.
I make a motion to approve item 15, authorizing DSA to issue Karnes County jail contract documents for bidding.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries. Number 16, review approved, disapproved, selective demolition and asbestos abatement for Phase 1 and Phase 1A of the courthouse project.
I have a handout for you here. This is updated, previously I did a report for you on, on the courthouse project, on the monies and the contingencies and budgets, et cetera. And since there was more money left in Phase 1, if that money just goes back to THC, then you don't get the benefit of those matching funds. So what we did is, we bid out the asbestos abatement, which needs to be done in the entire courthouse. It was only done previously for just the Phase 1 construction. And we bid that out and then selective demolition that has to be done in order for you to complete your Phase 2 documents and in order for you to complete even the, some of the Phase 1A construction. So those are two items that are necessary and absolutely have to be done. And we received the bids and the overall cost of doing the selective demolition and the abatement payment at $178,000, which is more than we have left in our contingency. And I'll do a line item, I'm doing a summary real quick on my thought process and then I'll go over item by item, how I put these charts together. So I started thinking, well, some of that asbestos abatement and some of the selective demolition would have to be done in order for you to even do your foundation repairs. So I contacted the Texas Historical Commission and asked them, could that not be also included in our construction costs for your Phase 1A grant that is going to be that 50/50 matching foundation repair emergency grant that they're going to be meeting on at the end of the month? And he said, "As long as I divided everything out and showed them line item by line item, what part would have to be done for the foundation repairs and what part you're doing as a prep for, you know, completing the work you need to do and in prep for your Phase 2," that they would consider that. So that's what I'm presenting before you today, as well as hopefully authorization to go ahead and do this work. So on your first page, I have a recap at the beginning that shows back in 2010 when the project was started, the total grant, $926,829. And, and then your construction contract is 780, or the construction, I'm sorry, lady, second. The construction contract was budgeted at 780, 780, and professional fees and reimbursable expenses of $53,289. You had a project contingency at that time of $92,760. Actual, after contracts were signed, still the same grant amount, but your construction contract as of this month is 792,844. And the professional fees for the Phase 1 for Fisher Heck were $66,138, leaving a project contingency balance of $67,846. Items that have come before you in the past year to be spent out of that contingency balance related to items to be done with the courthouse and that the THC approved to be paid out of that grant amounted to $48,837 and each one is listed there. And so that left, leaves a project contingency balance of $19,009. And then we have a construction contingency still in Boyle's contract because we took out all those finishes that they were going to do that you really, since you're not moving back in the courthouse, it didn't make sense to do any of them and we came before you and we took those out, leaves us with a construction contingency balance of $23,000. So available funds for Phase 1 to still spend is $42,836. Okay, so that still also, you know, leaves a gap between the 178 that we're asking for and what's available for Phase 1. So on your next page, I have a, I have a chart that shows for you, and this is what I presented to THC for their review and their grant award, what portions of the funds that are being requested are going to be part of Phase 1A that you have to do in order to do the foundation repairs and what part are not part of the THC Phase 1A grant, but would be part of an extended portion of Phase 1. But all of these are items that really have to be done in your courthouse before you can even get to Phase 2, which would be your total restoration. So if you're going to go forward with total restoration, all of these items have to be done. And if you do them together at one time, it'll save money versus piecemealing them, which is why I prepared this the way that I did. So each of these items here, the first item is Clean Environment. They're the agency that will test and monitor the asbestos abatement. Their total cost there are $13,900. Phase 1 portion is $6,900 and Phase 1A that we're going to be asking for a matching grant on foundation repairs is $6,952. Graham Loom's fees for the portion of work finishing in Phase 1 is $8,200. And those are appropriated out also, $4838 for Phase 1 and $3362 for Phase 1A. Daily sphere architects, owners' rep fees for this extended portion of Phase 1, $8,000 portioned out, $4750 and $3,300. Then I have the estimated reimbursable expenses for both of those contracts and those are portioned out as for Phase 1 and Phase 1A. Owners' rep fees for the foundation repairs, which all of that would be under Phase 1A because none of those expenses have been incurred yet to date. Paint analysis restoration, which is another item I have on the agenda, is $11,713 and I portioned those out to Phase 1 and Phase 1A. And then MJ Boyle's change order, the total cost to do all of the selective demolition and abatement is $178,000 and those have been portioned out for Phase 1 and Phase 1A. So in the end, when you look at the funds that need to be spent, the total cost of everything related to completing Phase 1 and doing Phase 1A is $241,000. The portion that the county would need to pay out of their bond monies and would not be part of any grant awards is $134,158. And the portion that we're going to ask THC to include in the foundation repair matching funds is $107,211. The last item there is a separate construction budget that Graham Loom has provided for the foundation repairs and that's $939,000 is their construction budget. So this comes up with $1,046,211 that is being requested from THC on the emergency foundation repairs and we put in there that they're, you're asking for a 50/50 match on that. There's two other problems that I put on here because as you proceed with getting towards, getting to the Phase 2 portion of the project, there's going to be other anticipated expenses that will be, you know, until you get the grant, they don't match any monies, even if it's going towards getting the grant. So for the Phase 1A, the money that we're spending to get to the point that we even get that grant, that's not reimbursable by THC, but it does count, it counts as points when you do your grant application, et cetera, so it does help you there. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that in Phase 1A, I have a third page that shows you what expenses that you've spent just to get to the point that you can get the grant and that's $61,985. And then to get to Phase 2, there will be other expenses that, you know, in order to get to that point that you can get the grant and those have not been determined yet. So what we're asking today for is authorization to do the, approve the necessary change orders to do the selective demolition and abatement for the total amount of monies required in order to completely abate and do the selective demolition in the courthouse at this time, preparing for Phase 1A as well as preparing for Phase 2.
So you, how much is that?
Okay, the, the cost for the abatement is $178,000. And there's, I had MJ Boyle prepare two separate change orders. $104,874.28 would not be part of any grant, that'd be, you'd be paying that out of your bond monies. And then $73,126 would be, we're requesting as part of the Phase 1A. So it's $178,000. The money for the $13,000 at the top, that had already been approved in a previous Commissioners Court meeting, there was a not-to-exceed price of $15,000 approved by Clean, for Clean Environment to do the air, dispense and the air monitoring so that we could bid out the abatement. So the other, and the other fees on here have been previously reviewed or approved or they're on the agenda, but I included them on this chart because I wanted you to be able to see an overall picture of how those monies are spent and what your, if I piecemeal it and at the end I give you the total and you're like, "Well, Larry, you never told us it added up to this amount. I didn't want to be in that boat," so.
So you take that as a bond reimbursement?
It would, these would be monies that you're committing to pay out of the, out of the bond reimbursement. But they have to be done, so, and if we do them separate, just like even on the abatement, when we got a price just to do the asbestos survey for the first floor... just to do the asbestos survey for the first floor, it was, it was almost the same amount as when I said, we'll do the whole building, they said, well, it's another $500, you know. So there's so much economy of scale sometimes in doing things together. And we only have things on here that have to be done anyway. So it really ultimately will save you money if we do everything now versus saying, let's just do the first floor and we'll do the second and third floor later.
Now, I certainly feel that we should get all that asbestos abatement done, all that abatement done right now and get it over so we don't have to deal with it later. Like you said, it's not that much more cost at this time.
And it has to be done. It only will cost more later because of inflation and then separate trips, et cetera. And then the selective demolition, we've narrowed it down to only those things that have to be done for the Phase One A and for, to prepare for Phase Two because you can't, until they determine about clock tower and some balconies and some different things that they have to determine what was actually there, you can't even really complete your Phase Two drawings. And if you don't complete them and have them accurate, then you're going to be looking at change orders and change orders usually cost more money than if we get the documents accurate now. So on the agenda today is just to approve the abatement and the selective demolition, which would be two change, it's the $178,000 and it'd be the two, we'll do two separate change orders with Boyle so that those monies are clearly defined for the THC as what's the, what's your portion versus what's there.
Do you read originals?
Well, the change request will be turned into a change order. So when I have that, I'll bring that to the sign.
Is that just a calendar of your projected schedule?
Okay, the projected schedule is, if everything's approved today, we will have our, I'll lift that in my seat. But I remember it's, it's the middle of June. Everything will be, Boyle will be done, I want to say by June the 10th. He'll be done with all of his selective demolition and abatement and we'll be able to roll right in with the foundation repairs at that time. And then the end of April is the date that the THC will need to approve the emergency funding for the foundation repairs.
Have you been in contact with Graham to say when he will be ready to bid?
Yes, he sent his documents up to THC. They were due this week and so I sent him some critical dates and he sent them up. Mark Cowan has already replied. He's asking for some more information, some more specs and has some questions and so those have been forwarded over to Graham and he'll be replying back to Mark.
What date of April is that?
April the 25th is the meeting. So if somebody from the court can go, it would be very helpful to have a court presence up there along with your, you know, Karnes County Historical Society and then I'll be going and Graham will be going up there. So it is April the 25th. I don't have the time yet or the date or the location, but I have a little reminder to, as soon as we know what that is, to send an email to you, Judge, so that you have that information. And then April 29th is the official date that, and I've already talked to Boyle about this, if he starts work on any of the selective demolition and abatement, we're going to start on the third floor and not do any work on the first floor until after April the 29th, which is the date that those matching funds will be official when they award them to you on the 25th. So we're watching that. We're going to work from the top down instead of from the bottom up so that we maintain that, you know, responsibility there and the most amount of funds, you know, for you.
Everything on the third floor is, I don't think.
Yay, I saw people over there and I pulled up.
There's a lot of surprises we found.
Surprises.
I'll tell you about that later.
Okay. That's good. We're making really good progress.
All in favor, say aye. You just want to say as written?
Yes, as written.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 17, Lorraine, and now you're back to the jail, I think, right?
Yes, and this one should go pretty quickly. Since we have, while the maintenance surveyors were here, I dragged them over to the jail site and said, okay, I want you to clear my jail site while you're here. And they had found only one building that had minor asbestos problems in it and it's the building just to the east of Mr. Malloy's property, north of where Building C was. And so I asked them, I said, okay, if we handle this abatement at the same time as the courthouse, will it save us money? So I just did a chart for you. It's very minor, but the specs in order to have the abatement done is $250. If we do it later, it'll still be $250. If we do it now, we don't need to do a walkthrough because the same abatement contractor that would be doing the courthouse is already familiar with Clean Environment who's writing the specs and they can discuss it without a walkthrough. It's a savings of $700. The air monitoring would be the same if we do it now or later, $400 either time. But the abatement, if the same contractor that's doing the abatement on the courthouse just comes over, it's a half a day and does the abatement, he can do it for $600 versus $1,500. So we can get a total cost of $1,250 for the specs and the abatement and the air monitoring at that small building on the jail site versus if we do it separate later, it'd be $2,850. So we can save $1,600 if we go ahead and approve that. And since the monies are so small, we don't have to do bidding and all of that. We can just hire those to do the work, so.
So I make the motion to approve the as written. The saving of $1,600 is good now.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Lorraine, you got to go over, still over here. Discuss, disapprove, authorizing the required paint analysis at the Karnes County Courthouse.
Okay, so before we do selective demolition, the Texas Historical Commission requires that we do a paint analysis of all the finishes. This was done on the outside before so that you could figure out or they could figure out what colors the paint the outside. But this analysis will improve the entire building. So again, we're going to take care of the whole building. Give you the paint analysis of interior and exterior. I asked Graham to get three proposals. He contacted three different people. We got pricing from two people. One, the lowest price was Restoration Associates. The other company that responded was $14,000. All three of these companies, they specialize in the paint analysis for historical courthouses. And again, we asked them for a separate price to do the whole building is $11,713. If they just did the first floor, it's $4,280. But that's not in addition to, that's, you know, a part of. And that's what helped me on my chart to determine how much would be attributed to the first floor versus the whole building. And also here is Graham's recommendation of selecting Restoration Associates to do this paint analysis.
Graham told me that the paint analysis was done before, but it wasn't accepted. You know, in other words, we have, we're supposed to have 95% complete plans, but we still got a lot of things coming up that have to be done, except this was also to be done, so. That's be done and we're committed to go through with the restoration of courthouse, so I think it'd be best to get it done today, so.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
As written? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 19 is discuss, approve, disapprove advertisement professional services related to construction materials testing for the jail project.
So for the jail project, the, all of the testing that happens during construction, we recommend it is done as a separate contract with the owner because they're there to safeguard you and we want them to be contractually obligated to you. So if something, you know, is even on the almost pass or almost fail side, there's no incentive. They're not working for the contractors, they're working for you to protect you. So I would like to put an advertisement out for a request for qualifications for engineers that are qualified to do the construction materials testing. In this advertisement, my thoughts were to go ahead and have all of the proposals be delivered to the county auditor's office and on April the 23rd, which would be a week before your court date. And then I could open them, I can distribute copies, I can bring copies over to the county judge so you can all have copies of the RFQ to be looking at that week. And at the same time that week, I can evaluate them and be prepared to come back to court on the last meeting in April and make a recommendation. So if you want to receive them on April 30th in court and then we go back and wait two weeks to make the recommendation, that's an option too. And it doesn't matter either way. I have this one written as proposal due date April 23rd with the thoughts that we would review them and come back to you with a recommendation on April 30th.
Will we, will these people come make presentation or will they just make a speech?
If you want them to make a presentation, then you can. Typically on construction materials testing, it's a, it's based on professional services. So you select based on professional services and then you would be negotiating the pricing with them. And what happens is if you can't negotiate with the highest ranking, then you would be going down, you know, after that. But the first step, making the recommendation, typically we do that based on the packet that they provide to us. So it's completely up to you. We can, we can have them come and make presentations or we can vote based on recommendation.
Well, I personally don't feel like they have to all make presentations. They're just going to do it. Do I make a presentation or just?
Proposals. So you just need a motion to approve the advertisement?
Yes, ma'am.
I make it as written.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 20 is discuss, approve, disapprove ending the county attorney department's budget for 2012-13. Moving budget line item within the budget, no change in the net expense in the county or state fund. Request a change when we substitute county attorney line item. $500 of computer expense used to purchase the scanning functionability to the county attorney's Hill Country computer package. And that's her.
Hill Country has already packaged in place for the county attorney's office. It has not been used totally and they are now putting it in place in our computers. The only thing that's lacking in that program is the scanning function and the ability for us to scan files into the computer. The county clerk and the district clerk's office has that function available, but as far as I can tell from our conversations with Hill Country, we don't have that. This is not a request for a amount other than it's already bottom line in the budget.
You just want to move 500 from one line up to the other, her?
That's correct.
I make the motion we approve as written.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 23 is discuss, approve, disapprove a modification to the language in the performance work statement and the total number of beds stated in the agreement of the facility. And that's me. All they're doing is changing their language. It's just their contract, it has nothing to do with us. We're merely to pass through people.
Doesn't change anything.
Doesn't change anything. It doesn't change monetarily. It doesn't change anything, but because of the way that account was set up, we're the pass through guys, so we have to sit there and pass all this through.
Make the next one through by number three.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is to discuss, approve, disapprove releasing Luke Patton from a lease of the Karnes County Yard property located Gillette, Texas with an effective lease date of March 1st, 2013. We're not aware of any contract. Mr. Heimcock, did you ever find a contract?
No.
So all we need to do is release him by motion.
Luke Patton from the Karnes County Yard property in Gillette, Texas.
I'll second it.
Effective date should have been March 1st, 2013. Will you please say as written?
As written.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. What happened? Somebody say something?
I'm outside.
No. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Discuss reports commissioners' court of conducting salary survey for employees of Karnes County to include job descriptions and review of employee manual and if needed, pay policy manual to be completed prior to budget year. Funds are budgeted for the salary survey and they are in the current budget and that's Shelby.
I've been talking with the company out of San Antonio. I was referred, they referred to me by Tag. And this company is, he worked, he was a professor at UTSA and he does a lot of salary surveys for Bear County, Comal, I believe, and he visits some other cities. Kurt, he was in El Paso today. I'm waiting to give a call to him this afternoon. But my conversation with him was, and again, I'm just reporting to the court that in one of the attendance, that this guy, I'm asking him to look at the suggestion on creating job descriptions for county employees as well as the chief deputies or whatever their assistant may be for clerks, tax assessor, collector, whatever department we have. And then it's doing a salary structure where we could probably have our pay for our county employees to be up or we're not, we're not really trying to compete so much as to try to find people. So trying to get the pay where we can maybe attract some people or see if we're where we should be or where we need to go. And he's supposed to come, when he gets every of this information together, he's supposed to probably come to a proposal to the court talking about what's going on, as well as I'll ask him to meet with department heads to explain the process when he was doing. He doesn't do it by, his cost was roughly, he says they charge by job and not the person. So he may have five people in one job he's doing. It just could be at one cost for that person. I think somebody else, I think the city may have done it by the person, but this is, I think it's going to be a little cheaper. And I want to get this done prior to budget year so when we start budgeting, we'll know what we can do to have our pay schedules set for our people.
Is that it, Shelby?
This is important.
Number 26 is to discuss conducting a needs assessment study to include strategic planning to aid commissioners' court in setting goals for the upcoming budget year.
We've been here three months. We really haven't, I mean, I've been here three months. Really haven't, as a court, we haven't really done nothing in my opinion to plan for the future. I know there's a lot of stuff going on in this county and I think we need to establish a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, maybe a 20-year plan, but if we can contract with some service company that, in my opinion, to come in and do a study of our county, our needs, and that's part of the needs assessment and the next item where it is. But we need to get a group in here and help us schedule, structure a plan so we can move forward with what monies we have and help us in budgeting the county.
Bob, help us a little bit with the financial plan. Do you want to?
I want to, more than debt plan. Not so much a financial plan, a plan where we know where we want to go in each department. You may have something, district clerk, you may want to continue, tax may have something, want to continue road bridge. But we need to get something where we can start planning and progressing and visit these plans and update them as we go. I'm not aware of any plan that's in place that the county does and we need to start looking at that. And just again, my opinion, I just want to state that where I hadn't talked with anybody about that, but everybody I've talked to, everything I've gone to says you need to do a needs assessment and you need to reduce strategic planning, especially in the Eagle Ford area because danger changes.
I can get somebody to do that, Shelby. Go to Judge. Number 27 is to discuss soliciting services of an engineer from a road and bridge department planning upcoming road bridge repairs for the major of budget year 2012, 2013 and budget year fiscal year 2013, 2014. Current budget year has funds for a road engineer and that's Shelby.
This is not trying to solicit a full-time road engineer. It's not what it's about. It's about, we have bridge projects, we have road projects that we need to do. And I need, we need to try to get somebody that will help us schedule engineer-type plans to include bridge construction stuff. I mean, it's just like, get a company, find somebody to come in and that can help us plan how we want to do our roads. Try to set some structure where we're not doing everything from the hip. A company that can come in, help us plan, project costs for us and get more current costs to us than we have that's in the industry. And then we can come by for budget time. We'll have some decent numbers for what we're doing. It may be, I know ACOG come in, did a study and made it said that to do our roads in Karnes County would be close to what, eight or 10 million dollars, something like that? DeWitt County's had a company come and do theirs. This company I visited with the other day, the Hoff and Associates are out of San Antonio. They're doing stuff to make Mumm County to include subdivision ordinances, flood ordinances and stuff like that. There's a Hoff, H-A-L-E-P, and they, they're doing stuff for different counties around to, just to give them my suggestions to go over.
Yeah, I would, well, I lived in county, the road bridge administration talked to them and they saw how they have plans for what's coming up on their roads. Of course, they have most of the paved roads and that's the biggest problem.
But they, but they can. But they, but they can, but they-
Anyway, we can get ideas from them, and I'm gonna go to Callagou County and check if they're all to the Chelmsford City.
And this guy, you know, we, we can set it up, I'm sure, by, by projects that we would need, we would need to, by a full-time staff, but by project, you can limit the amount of money per month we're spending on some construction. Please, ma'am.
I appreciate you putting this on the agenda, Shelby. I can't tell you how much, because we voted on this in March of two thousand twelve, which was exactly one year ago, and nothing has been done. I agree with you wholeheartedly that we need a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, a supplement to move us forward into the twenty-first century. We actually have money for the first time. And as you saw the presentation with Maraine, imagine that project over there, if we didn't have her expertise, her professional cost analysis and everything she does for us, why we have not brought a firm in here and have bids put in on the road analysis, cost analysis, strategic planning, I cannot understand, because, you know, we haven't the money and the ability to do it now, so if it could become an actual action instead of just a discussion, it would be greatly appreciated.
We did have a presentation where we went on to the chairman, did you ever thought we were currently doing this? And we did advertise, and, um, it was rejected.
Where, where'd you advertise?
It was done, a bunch of guys, May Smith Engineering and somebody else. There's four or five engineer firms that came down and did presentations.
We advertised for a position for a national championship.
No, 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 but like, May Smith Engineering and all those other people came out.
It's, it's still running, it's still running, regardless of what you said.
They came down and they gave presentations.
It's still running. My, my idea is to get a firm in and, and for projects, and just go ahead and go for it.
Presentation.
We stopped right here, for some reason, with the road fund and everything, they love it. The roads are no different than they were fifty years ago.
All right. Right.
Number twenty-eight is to discuss approve, disapprove, entering into an agreement with the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, so that Corns County may use state-approved trustees to do work for Corns County.
Okay, I went to talk to Warden the other day. I had six inmates, we went in, court out, and we cleaned out the courthouse. I got four of them working it right now. And, uh, doesn't cost us a penny, they're just going in and asking, and I got it for three days. I want to give them for three months, but I'm gonna have to, we'll have to sign a contract. Warden bribes them, then we'll, we'll grant me those inmates, but then it needs to go to Hunt, it goes to Regent, and it goes to Huntsville, and it'll probably take forty days or something to, to get that approval back. My idea with these inmates is this, one is, uh, on county roads, there's a lot of tires, mattresses, some of the responsible people are just throwing stuff everywhere, and trying to get, get these guys come in and pick up, you know, pull the tires out, clean up these roads on the, on the side of the road, get all the hazardous stuff, get it out of the waterways and things like that. Another thing, in front of courthouse, I'm gonna try to get some on a three-day contract to come back, and I want them to clean the flyer beds up front, and I'm gonna have, do it like they used to do at the prison, they're gonna cut them edges back on sidewalks, being back, and make little flyer beds out of them, something like that. Think I can get some stuff to put in there at low cost as well. But, uh, nobody's ever used these inmates, nobody's ever asked for them, they want to work, they're a bunch of trustees, some of them, there's, you know, they don't have much time there, but they're, they're wanting to work. I don't know if anybody realized, the ones that have been here watching them work, they've, they've worked pretty hard and they've got a lot of stuff done in three days. We cleaned out that whole courthouse in three days. Not to say, with that being said about the courthouse, uh, I want to remind everybody that when there's a project to be done, make sure if you're, you're in charge, to do something like that, to clean out your things, clean them out, because inside the top courthouse, we found, let's see, we found marijuana, we found seven or eight pistols, a bunch of Evidive pitchers, and, and kind of other stuff that, you know, we've moved to the side, the guns were turned over to the sheriff as well as the marijuana.
And the inmates bought you the stuff?
And the inmates bought me the stuff, as they were taking it down, me and Jeffrey. And, uh, you know.
And what floor did Jeff buy them?
This is on third floor, this is in the courthouse, this is the courtroom.
The third floor?
Third floor.
No, uh, third floor.
Second floor.
Second floor, district.
But that door, but my thing about this, the security of that whole building was a joke, because those, that door was open, it was never secured, I don't know what's walked out of that building, I don't know who took what, who knows if the guys doing construction there went in there and guffed themselves and all kind of stuff, who knows? But we need to, you know, I just want everybody to understand that those are cleared out now and everything has been turned over to proper authorities for disposition.
Shelby, I don't know who had a key to it, that door was always locked, and I never went in there and never asked for a key.
Because it was open.
And one day I went in there and it was open.
It was open.
I don't know who unlocked it.
It's open anyway, but I, but that's the deal, you'll be seeing some inmates in the county, they'll have officers with them, uh, we're gonna have to rent a, when we get out on the road, we're gonna have to rent a porta potty for them, that's here and there.
I'm working on that.
Obviously, to be honest, inmates have been turning the gun in.
But anyway, we, but, but, again, it's no cost or liability to the county for the guys' work.
Okay, the liability issue on that, the county has no liability, if they get hurt or they would happen to escape and hurt someone, we have no, we have no room for someone to sue the county, since they're helping the county.
They're, they're, they're in custody.
So they're fully responsible, even though they're doing work for us, they're fully responsible for that.
Fully responsible.
I make a, make a move, we approve number twenty-eight as written.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number twenty-nine, discuss report that Texas Department of Health Services Region Eight is currently developing a regional mass fatality plan. Corns County is in region, I guess that should be eight.
Going, I went to a meeting the other day at the San Antonio Operation for Bear County. The Region Eight is complaining, a lot of things have took place in the world, in the United States, regular mass, mass casualties have taken place, this, uh, uh, human services Region Eight has taken upon themselves to create a regional plan, and that regional plan is very detailed, uh, some of it could, it was talked about, you know, reimbursement for, for certain things, as well as what the county would be responsible for and things like that. When you have regional mass fatality, say, if, say a jet crashes through Corns County, I mean, coming through Corns County, saving fifty or a hundred people, or even five people, if it crashes, it comes under federal jurisdictions, we would get some assistance in that, in, in doing that. But if you had a big one like two hundred people, say, were getting a casualty, how are we gonna handle that? Uh, one, you're gonna have to have, the JP's gonna have to go through a certain type of training to handle, because by law, we understood, they were talking, JP can only work in their district to declare certain things. And if, if it's, uh, and, again, those bodies would have to lay there to, to the sheriff, nobody could touch those things, do they get inspected, you know, it's, it's a big, long policy plan. And I've talked with, uh, Steve Haneman, he's gonna come down, he's gonna, I'm gonna get him to come down and explain everything in a meeting to everybody, what departments are gonna have to do, they're looking at the resources we have. One of the questions was, do you have a, do you have a, a medical examiner? No. How many body bags do you have? Zero. Uh, how many, how do you plan, how can y'all plan to, to take care of families that come into a critical, to a incident like this? Usually they say, well, when something bad happens, you get, for every one person, five or six people will show up. How are you gonna handle these people? How are you gonna talk to them? If there's, uh, how are you gonna handle two hundred death certificates at one time? Who's gonna do all this? Can't bring judges from another county and JP's to your county, but so how are you gonna do this? So, uh, this is getting to be, folks, this is gonna be a big, big issue throughout the state, throughout the region. It's, it's, it's gonna be something that we're all gonna have to be participating in. But I've talked with them, they're gonna come in, they're gonna try to explain what they're doing. We're helping write the plan, I'm gonna be on the team at, for the state, whatever, but it's gonna be a, a big, a big issue. It's something we're all gonna have to look at.
Thanks, Shelby. Number thirty is discussion of possible action on the adoption of a resolution of the updated tax abatement. I provided you guys with a copy of that, probably, uh, February twelfth, two thousand, uh, was modified on two fourteen, but that should say two fourteen, well, this is the day we had court. What this is, is this is nothing, uh, there's nothing in here that says that we have to adopt it, we have to accept it, we have to do anything. When we left that meeting, I left the instructions that everybody was gonna go read it and that everybody was gonna come back with their suggestions, if they had any, or if there was any changes that wanted to be made. The law students did this for us. Do y'all remember the law students that came down, the big tall girl and the other? Okay, the law students did this, and what they wanted to do was use this as a project, and they actually did. And if you wanted to add something to it, delete something to it, or if you want no abatement guidelines at all, I don't care, I don't need an abatement for anything. It's for the county. I've never given an abatement, I've never done an abatement, I'm stuck monitoring abatements that were done, and I just shot off a letter to some of the former abatements that we granted, because we get form letters that says, dear judge, we met the criteria. I'll show them to you, they come certified, that's exactly what they say. Uh, I, most places have abatement guidelines, in case somebody does want to come in, like a skilled nursing facility or something that's a benefit to the county, you know, like if they provide a service, I'm not telling you that every oilfield company that comes in needs an abatement, that's not what was said here at all. I don't think, when Mr. Henderson made his comments about us not needing to give abatements, I don't think if we had a skilled nursing facility or something like that come in. With us all growing like this and with this stuff happening in the Eagle Ford, I mean, our populations are growing, so people are bringing in medical services and doing stuff like that. Medical services even come to Eagle Ford Shell Conferences now. So that's what that's here for, it's a working document. None of us are going to prison over it, we didn't do anything wrong, it's a working document. So if you don't want this on here and you don't want the law students to do it, I strongly suggest that you go to section four one zero zero seven of the government code and request an opinion to Mr. Hancock, asking him if we need one or if we don't need one, or to request it to whoever you want to request it to. But this was just, um, done at no cost, as a law student project, for us to work on, for us to put in what we wanted to put in, and for us to modify it in any way we wanted to modify it, or do anything we wanted to do with it. If you don't want those guidelines in place, tell me, so I can tell the law students that we aren't gonna change anything, that we don't want to go forward, that's all this is.
Yeah, I, I read it, I read it a few times, that, no, I don't want, I don't want these guidelines and criteria that are in here.
No, but do you, do you want them to modify it? Do you want to talk to them, or do you want anything from them?
Uh, I wouldn't mind talking to them, but the way it's written right here, there's a lot of things that are marked out that I don't agree on, there's just things here that, it's very questionable on this, so, yeah, of course, this right here, this abatement for guidelines and criteria, I wouldn't want this from them, but to talk to the students yet, that's not a problem.
And if, and this is gonna be my last action on abatements, I'm done. If y'all want to figure out, y'all want to have Mr. Hancock write abatement guidelines, y'all want to have somebody write them, you've got a workshop where we sit here and write them, but, uh, this was, like I said, just a project by the students, which they could have fixed for us.
I remember.
Well, if we decide to go in with a, a abatement with someone, we can get Mr. Hancock to work it out with them.
Well, you have to have the guidelines in place when they go to EDC. See, that's the-
I think we need some guidelines placed, so we need to be-
We had some before, we just don't-
The only thing I need, I think we need to have in here is monitoring of someone after the abatement, that has to be a condition in here, doesn't it?
The problem is that we, we-
Make sure that they uphold what they're talking about.
We give them some tax abatements and we're not following through with it.
I did send them some letters, Shane, if you want to look at them, I sent them the other day to Mesa and Select, because what ends up happening is I get form letters and they say, dear judge, we have met the criteria. That's all it says, but then-
It said no explanation.
No. And so I sent them a letter back saying that we needed to know exactly how they met the criteria, you know, to explain, criteria for criteria, how they met it, what they were doing to meet it.
I understand.
I mean, because they're gonna say, oh, I'm employed fifty people from Corns County, then it needs to say, we have successfully employed, you know, fifty people from Corns County, we can provide you those names on a as-needed basis or something, not just we have met the criteria.
Scott, would you like to say something?
Well, I would. I, I know the tax abatement guidelines for, uh, Bear County, which is one point eight million people, and it's four pages long. And I gave Tracy a copy and I have a copy for y'all.
I have a copy of it, man. You know, it's, it's very simple.
And if you want to, y'all want to give it to Herb, does he been writing and asking?
Yeah, 'cause-
It's done, it's been writing for-
If it's one point eight million people are doing it, can I need one?
All right, I have it.
First, first- Well, for example, any coverage that they do, they say, they get off to them, send them all kind of money to help their technology and stuff like that.
Understand, that's why if we can get Herb to come and look it over, because we got sixteen pages here.
Somebody needs to provide that opinion, I mean, that needs to Herb in writing, to request that.
I would like to shorten it up to maybe four pages or three pages.
You can put that right in there.
Sure.
Okay. There's a local beverage house. Okay, so we're not gonna take any action on that one. Number thirty-two is certification of funds for the county surplus equipment auction March ninth, two thousand thirteen.
Following the auction on March ninth, I audited the receipts and the sales documents that by provided me. The total sales for the auction were twenty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, which I verified. Total receipts were twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. Those are what are proceeded in the system, those numbers thirty-eight, eight forty-five and thirty-eight, nine forty-five are the receipts when the monies were in our financial system. We had fifteen dollars more than actually sold. If there was a change issue, if there's incorrect change given or something like that, I don't know, but we made fifteen dollar more profit than we thought we had. The breakdown of monies that were deposited to the funds, the general fund got seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars, Roden Bridge received twelve thousand two hundred and five dollars, and the sheriff's SOFF fund, which is a forfeiture fund, received three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars from the seized forfeit, forfeited vehicles that were sold on their behalf, which again totaled the total receipts of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. I'm certified in the receipts of those additional revenues. If there comes a time that someone wants to spend some of those particular funds, they will have to come to court to approve a budget for the expenditure of those dollars.
Next one's Roden Bridge.
Miss Casper, where does that money go?
The next one's Roden Bridge. Okay. Where, uh, Jeff asked where the money goes.
That, where does that, like, the Roden Bridge money go?
It's Roden Bridge.
Okay, that's mine, thank you, ma'am.
Where did you own spend it?
I have to request it from you guys, I understand.
And if you need additional vests or something, you can always use that fund and request it out of those two, or if you need stuff.
Okay. So they have to have Roden Bridge?
Right, but just so he'll know that he has that extra money laying around.
Roden Bridge.
Roden Bridge expenditures requiring budget amendment, A, H and V equipment, two, twenty thirteen, number two zero 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 nine two three for two thousand eight hundred and seven dollars, and RDO equipment for six thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighteen cents. The Rammer was not among the equipment purchases approved in budget for two thousand thirteen, that's the twenty-eight oh seven. The motor grader was not among the, approved for two thousand thirteen, and then there's a Dozer that was leased in two thousand twelve, the Wallford Crossing Road that continues to be rented, but the rental purpose has not been completed.
You can wait and make that brief. You go back to the middle item, the seventy-seven GX, it's printed on the agenda, but it should be seventy-seven two GX motor grader. I talked to Jeff about this, and he is thinking this is what they were supposed to be loaning us when our brand-new one was in the shop. I don't know if you were able to clarify that?
I called the dealer and he thinks he's got it on, Miss Road, he's gonna go back on his records and check his records and make sure that he didn't charge us for that month, and he's gonna come back through after he gets all the billing cycles and everything they'll go through, it'll take him some time and he'll come and present it to us then. It'll take him some time, and he'll come and present it to us then.
Okay, my question there too also is, because we are amending the budget for this Rammer that was purchased, if you're going to continue leasing this piece of equipment, we need to know a duration to be able to amend the budget to pay for that, and it'd be better to do it now, before we have the information from him. If it's going to be sixty-nine hundred dollars a month, and you're going to do it for the rest of the fiscal year, or whatever, so that we can do the amendment before we get a bill, so it doesn't delay paying the bill.
I understand, yeah. We're trying to get it as quick as possible. On the, on the eight, the piece of equipment, H and V, that is the jumping jack, uh, it's a walk behind, it packs dirt around our culvert pipes and stuff. To rent this jumping jack costs about seven hundred dollars a week, plus a trip to Corpus, or a trip to San Antonio, and to see if you can find it. Y'all see the cost on it, what it costs, brand-new, it only balances out, you know, we might as alone it, and we've done put eight hours on this thing since we bought it, so it's, it's paying, paying for itself quick. It's a piece of equipment that...
How much was it, what did it cost you?
Uh, what is it?
Twenty-eight hundred and seven dollars.
Okay.
So what do we need to amend?
Loaner to rent it?
Yeah.
Do we just need to amend the twenty-eight oh seven, and you're going to see what happens with the sixty-nine thirteen eighteen?
Yes.
So you don't need the sixty-nine thirteen eighteen till you find out?
What's that on?
The ones that said that might have been a loaner?
Yes, the loaner, the one month, I think what Ms. Casper called on there, I think that one month wasn't supposed to be charged, it was charged on us here for two months, rental on it, so we're going to back up and try to find out what happened.
So do we need to cut this in half, and pay him half of this amount?
This invoice is a one-month rental from the period of January twenty-second through February eighteenth, two thousand thirteen.
But we don't know what we owe it.
Right, we don't know if this is the amount from when they loaned it to us, when we had our brand-new motor grader in front of pairs. The question that is, Jeff still has this piece of equipment, and is going to continue to use it. We're going to have to amend for renting that.
But does it have for a loaner in our contract, when we bought the other one?
Yes.
They stood here in court until they saw the...
They said it did, they stood there in court, they were right there in the backside.
Yeah, no, it was a, they, they waited four hours with that machine going down, we had that blade sitting in the yard.
So do we have to amend for the sixty-nine thirteen eighty-seven, or eighteen? So we need to take that one off?
Yeah.
That's the one they're checking for.
They're saying amend for what he's going to have, and what he has.
Yes.
We're going to need to amend for whatever number of months he projects to use it for the rest of this fiscal year.
This figure here, is that rent to own?
Yes. Anything that, anything that comes on, on that rental agreement, and I got the paperwork on it, any dollar that goes, you pay on that, they take that money and put it on the top to bring down the price on the machine, plus it being a used machine, they're also going to knock some more...
They were going to knock about thirty, forty thousand off the initial cost.
Being a new machine, yes. And the reason, we got, we kind of fell in love with the machine for number one, you can get it in Borden, it's a six-wheel drive machine, it walks away from anything we got, it works, it does twice the work, I think you seen it, Tracy, it does twice the work what another machine will do.
A real good machine if we can find somebody to run.
We need to make these two amendments today, is what you're still saying, even after all that.
We need to authorize whether there is an agreement for rental of this, since it was not registered, and we need to authorize amending the budget for X dollars to be able to pay it when the bill does, correct the bill does come in.
And on the, on the Dozer, I got a machine that we're fixing up now, trying to get it to run, old maintainer, and, uh, H and, I mean, RDO is going to take this machine, we're going to take it and trade it, and there will probably be some money left over on that. Dozer will be sole owners of the Dozer, then, we're working on that, trying to get that done.
Okay, but that's not going right now, Ryan.
Right. But I just wanted to bring...
I make a motion, we amend Jeffrey's equipment as written in line number thirty-three.
I see.
All I'm saying with that is, how is it an emergency, necessary, unforeseen, a great public necessity? How's it going to qualify for amendment?
Do we have to work on roads? Are roads a great necessity?
But he already has two brand-new maintainers, we just bought it, the tune of two hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars each.
We're using this one for ripping most of the roads, doing all the heavy work with, and it's paying for itself what it does, because it's the amount of work that it does, so, uh, yeah, we're using it, the old maintainers, that's not holding up to our work.
When it adds to the rent?
Can I make a motion, we amend number thirty-three as written as a great necessity to work on the roads, as we need the equipment to work on the roads.
Oh, it is, it is considered a great public necessity.
I need it. The old maintainers...
Have to have it, can you work without it?
No.
The maintainers, the old ones, ain't holding up, that's our problem.
So number thirty...
We got it, it's great.
Okay. If you still second that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries, five zero. Number thirty-four is the treasures report.
But it does say great public necessity. I think the court were allowing me to wait till the end of the month, we get our vintages fixed on the treasures report.
What was the glitch?
It was a, uh, two, in January, one of the payrolls, December, the paycheck that we voided had to reissue because it was wrong. It didn't get cleared through the accounting system, and so we had Jeff McMahon, our check guy, last month, in January, to fix it, so the February, February report was correct. Well then, I'm sorry, the January was, report was correct in February, so when I ran February's report, it doubled it, instead of taking it out, so I, it was not a true statement of what we had in our payroll account.
So y'all are all matching good?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you signed by?
Yeah.
Just a motion for proof.
I'll make the motion, I'll prove, is that a good point?
I'll say no.
All in favor, say aye.
So this bank depository, are you going to have everything said and done, so we can advertise it Monday at noon?
We have to figure it out, but I'll figure it out. Do you have the old advertisement, does anybody have the old advertisement?
I have everything in my office, I will pass it to you.
You did it in our community, the wheels sometimes break in a minute.
No, it's a copy of what you put in, uh, depository did.
If you'll fax it to me, I will do it, get it all to the Eagle Publishing Company today.
Okay.
Okay? If you can just flip it over to me, that right there.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
The next one is Luana, again, reports in the auditorium.
As by stated, glitches were worked out among the system, where our balance is now impaired. You'll go to the page, entitled County Debt Requirements, meeting the local government code number four point oh two five, section four. You'll notice that we have paid one of our first annual payments to Frost National Bank on the, this building's certificates of obligation. We have also paid an interest payment to Aloys Lenhart on the ambulance that he financed. The next page are items of interest. Total county funds available as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen, twenty-three million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Total county funds invested as of February twenty-eighth, twenty-two million, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Total non-invested funds, one million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and three cents. The sales tax received on February eleventh, two thousand thirteen, was eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. The sales tax received in February, two thousand and twelve, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-six cents. That's an increase of approximately one hundred and forty-seven point five percent. Dollar equates to two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. But I'll caution you, our February of two thousand thirteen sales tax receipts decreased eleven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents from our January receipts, so we are on the downhill slide of our sales tax revenues. Twenty-two hundred dollars of reimbursement of attorney fees associated with the tax abatements was received from Duffin Phelps on February twenty-eighth, the balance outstanding, five thousand, six hundred and six dollars and twenty-four cents. A request was made from the Historical Commission on January tenth, for reimbursement number eight of sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-five cents, that has not been received yet. A reminder to all, and I put this on here so it would be on record in the county clerk's records, proper procedures for any purchases not currently included in the fiscal year budget requires approval by court and proper budget amendment before the obligation of the funds. That means before ordering, receiving, scheduling, any expenditure, it must be approved by court, and the budget amendment must be completed. That does not mean court approval and budget amendment is not done just before the payment, it has to be done before you obligate the county's funds. Do not order, purchase something, and then come to court for approval and budget amendment. Approval and amendment action must be taken and included in the minutes of the court before the obligation is made.
Luana, do you have a purchasing policy handbook?
Yes, sir.
So, we're going to, you anticipate, so everybody's on the same page in what you're talking about here?
It has never been put in print, when there are issues, it is brought up to the members of the court, as well as the different offices.
But shouldn't we have a purchasing policy handbook? I mean, I'm just asking, 'cause I've talked to other, other counties, and they have something in place, everybody's on the same page, if you don't follow the purchasing procedures, then you don't get it.
It could be planned to write in, since we do not implement a regimented purchase order system, which someday I would like to see happen, but, again, that would help alleviate this.
But you see where I'm going.
But the problem is, when you still have people going out and obligating the county dollars, and then the courts doing things retroactive, you know, oh, we've had that for three months, well, we better pay for it. It's going to be hard to get the powers that the, the department head, the officials, et cetera, to adjust to a regimented. I have problems and issues with people approving bills that are paid to their department, which is one reason I started that, is so that everybody knows what's going on with their department.
But you see where I'm, where I'm at.
Luana, on this balance from Duffin Phelps, did you send it, I mean, was it, did you already have all the bills, and they just chose to send you like a twenty-two hundred dollar payment, like out of the blue?
I'm sure it's because the last time Ross was here, and I mentioned that, when he was talking to tax abatements, he said he would contact them, and they paid part of it, and they have received all copies of invoices, but they have not paid off.
I got something on the letter to C C U.
Okay.
And this is your outstanding balance?
Uh, you said the sales tax was pulling three thousand, for the month of February?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Much more than that. The month of February two thousand thirteen was eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight twenty-eight sixty-four.
You got the down number?
Two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four thirty-four, twenty-eight, is what it was up from last year, but February was down from January by eleven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents.
Because it was only a twenty-year deal, is that making a difference?
We have seen gradual declines since October.
Okay, where are we at now?
Take the bills.
Next one's take the bills.
Love to be working, you know, I make home on a budget, I'm supposed to be...
Thank you.
You'll be a lot more, so it's not too painful, it's not too difficult, if you manage the apartment.
Page one, the first five entries all pertain to either the courthouse restoration phase one, phase one A, or the Karnes County Jail project. Of those five items, the jail expenditures total ten thousand, nine twenty-four, sixty-seven, and those were payable to Bailey and Spears Architects, and the courthouse is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six, forty-nine. You'll go down just a little bit further, on the same page, you'll see a sixty-five hundred dollar payment out of the county judge's budget for the new color copier that the court previously authorized amending the budget for. That was the copier that was going to be in the multipurpose room, but it is now located in this apartment. Further down on the same page is twenty-nine thousand, one forty-three, sixty-one, payable to the Karnes County Appraisal District. That is the county's quarterly payment to the operations of the appraisal district. All taxing entities contribute to their budget. On page seven, the next to the last entry is the monthly rent on the Dozer that was rented, as I mentioned earlier, in February two thousand and twelve, for the Walford Crossing Bridge, three thousand, five hundred and six dollars and sixty-two cents. Those are the out-of-the-ordinary expenditures. On page ten, you have the total for this bill cycle, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and six cents.
I do just want to clarify, we were going to put the copier in the multipurpose room, but Shelby told me that it wasn't wanted in there, and I cannot deny attorneys access to copies, so they have, they have to go somewhere to be able to make them, and so Shelby told me to put it in here.
The judges are...
They want discovery, we can't.
She's got a different one.
Well, we can't deny discovery, I mean, that thing hops during court day. I mean, I guess we could, try her, see what happens.
I make the motion to repay the bills.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I have to oppose, and the reason I apologize for that, but I haven't had enough time to look at this, I was working on all the other agenda items, but it's still in the past.
No, I'm, I'm going to oppose too, because I haven't had time to look at it, so.
I was hoping for my time to look at them, I couldn't hear them this morning.
Okay.
But that's, that was my fault, because, you know, I've been working on everything else.
So, but we're not paying bills today? I can put it back on the agenda on Monday, but we need time to look at them.
Is that going to recess for an hour, and we look at them? I don't have time to look at them.
They do all the houses.
Let's throw a close. Do you want to...
I can put it back on the agenda for Monday.
For Monday, is that fine, or do you want us to recess, and I'm asking...
I have to close.
Oh.
I mean...
Is Monday going to be, Monday fine, going?
Okay. The next item on the agenda, okay, uh, so, there was three opposed, two again, the